So, you ready to start?
Yes.
Alright, so, the meeting today is about, uh, do you have more people there? Uh, it's about the commissioner's decision not to support the Forest Service buying, the Holstrom Sheep Creek land in Maricopa County. So, I guess we'll start, I'll give some reasons why, and then we'll open it up for anybody who wants to speak. And we'll just call you off this list, um, if you want to, and then when we're done with that, if somebody else wants to speak, that's fine, that's all. So, the reason that we did not support the Forest Service buying Sheep Creek property was, there were a number of reasons, the first being, the Forest Service now owns a third of Maricopa County. And we thought, maybe that was enough of Maricopa County to be owned by the federal government. We thought, there might be a better way to do this, if they wanted access to their property that they don't have access to. Maybe they could do a land swap with some private people, or something, and get access to their property, without spending tax dollars to buy more property. I mean, that easement might cost them something, but probably would not cost them what buying that property would. And, the other, the other reason that ties in with that, of course, is the loss of tax revenue. That probably produces around thirty-nine hundred dollars annually of tax revenue. And that can be offset by pilt and secure rural schools money, but that, that money is not budgetable then, because we're not guaranteed it every year. So, we never budget that money when we budget for county services, because we honestly don't know if we're gonna get it or not. And, the last reason was, because of management. We feel that the Forest Service has problems managing their property and not, we don't blame the Forest Service for that, but they, they have to go through a lot more hoops, and a lot of times they get sued and held up. We feel the local Forest Service is trying to manage their property, their proper, property properly. But, sometimes they can't. So, that's our reasons why, uh, do you guys have anything to add?
Nope.
No? So, I guess we'll open up two discussions, and, the first person that, uh, here, that says, they want to speak, says maybe, is Aaron Blair, would you want to speak at this time?
I, I, just, I'll listen.
Okay. And then we have, uh, Mike Mueller from Missoula, Maricopa. I guess that's Missoula, is that right?
That's me, yeah.
Is that Missoula?
That's Missoula, yeah, yeah, thank you, Chairman. Where would you like me to come up and sit, or?
I already want to.
Yeah, so everybody can do it. Yeah, I thought that might be best. And I brought some information for you guys, I think that you probably got it last month, but I'm gonna give it to you, you don't need to look through it right now, but I'm just gonna provide it to you.
Who is?
Ben.
Oh, yeah.
Was I not slated at two-thirty on the agenda of the?
Yes, you were.
So, do I?
So, would you like to speak first?
Well, no, I was just, I was curious if, if I?
Your name was on the agenda, man, so.
So, Jim, would you mind that if I would steal my deal, because I do, I have prepared for this.
Yeah, okay, yes.
If that'd be alright, Mike.
Yeah, I, I want that to happen, but I was gonna make the suggestion, uh, to you, Ben, I didn't know who you were, but I might move from the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation out of Missoula, the lands program manager here, and have the privilege of being working in this, early stage of this project, and I could, if you want, I don't wanna take your time, but if you want, I can kinda give what the elk, where we're at with the project, with the Elk Foundation, or what's going on first, and kinda set the stage, if that works for you. But I don't wanna steal your thunder, you know, if you have a lot to say, does that work?
So, Ben, what, do you wanna speak now?
I have, if my, I was kinda expecting that, so that maybe I could facilitate some, to?
Okay, why don't you, I don't, because you were on the agenda first, I don't wanna take that from you.
I appreciate that.
Go ahead, Ben.
I appreciate that, Chairman Brewer. And I know we have a lot of people that are interested in speaking, and I do believe that I can work through this in a pretty quick manner.
Yeah, and you could get your point across, but people are short of funds.
Yep, and I will, and, uh, as everyone might know, I'm Benjamin Hogan, and I am from Maricopa County, and I've been here all my life, and I am a business owner, and, um, I appreciate the opportunity to address the commissioners. As an elected official, the rigmarole that you guys go through, and going through facts and information, and making a decision, is, uh, difficult, especially to make a decision in the best interest of the majority of the people. Like, I'm trying to surface some facts here, but I'm not here by any means at all to discredit the work ethic and the time you put in for the county. Nor am I here to create any controversy in this community, because I think all of us here do really like to be here. And we all work hard, so, by no means am I here to create controversy. The, the commissioner minutes that were in the Maricopa County news on November thirteenth was what initiated, initially got me to come and inquire on an opportunity here. You know, I think that being an elective, elective official is a difficult task, and I think we can open up some information here. I, as you guys know, I'm a passionate person, so I'm gonna call it my C-factor approach. And I call that cool, calm, collective, collaboration, and compromise. And I think we all can take those things together, and today, we can stay down and we just get the facts out there for the people. So, with that said, my objective today is to facilitate, facilitate a conversation between us all that will bring forth information and facts regarding, regarding the Holstrom Sheep Creek land acquisition. Information and facts which can better educate the public, so they may provide the commissioners on where they should stand on a forementioned acquisition. So, to get started, I'm gonna ask you a few questions, and they're simple questions, and it's in regard in, to the United States Forest Service. Would the commissioners agree grazing is an important aspect to Maricopa County's economic growth and sustainability?
Of course.
Would the commissioners agree that natural resource extraction, such as logging, is an important aspect to Maricopa County's growth and sustainability? Let's replace logging with mining, would you agree with that mining is important?
Of course.
Okay? Would you agree that public recreation and tourism are an important aspect to Maricopa County's economic growth and sustainability?
Yeah, not as important, I would say.
Okay, is that a matter of opinion, or could you cite?
Yeah, no, that's another thing.
There's no citation that you can show, okay?
But, yeah, it is important.
Would the commissioners agree that roads and trails in the United States Forest Service are an important infrastructure insofar wildlife protection, wildfire protection?
Yes, wildfire wildlife.
Okay, wildfire protection. Okay, so, okay, I know that I'm not sure what three parties are involved, and I'm gonna turn around and ask them some questions that I think are important, and if they do not have the answer to these questions, I will highly encourage them to get that out to the public. Is there, who could answer, I don't know sure who, who the owner is, or the, maybe the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, and, uh, the Forest Service reserve representations here. If, in fact, this acquisition was completed, would the, do the current grazing allotments continue? Would the current grazing allotments continue that are existing?
I can answer that, I'm Mike Mueller with the Elk Foundation, and, uh, that, of course, is on the table, and from my experience with projects like this before, uh, in fact, some current ones we're working on right now, yes, it could, but that's a Forest Service decision, and we'd have to work with the grazing allotments around it, and see how the new land put into the Forest Service system could be incorporated into allotments, but that's my experience, is that, yes, that's a possibility, but it is a Forest Service decision.
Okay, so, Mike, you understand that when the Forest Service cannot guarantee to the community of Mar, or the county of Mar, that the grazing allotments may be removed, or may not? It, you know, it is something that we have agreed with the commissioners, that is an important aspect, right?
Yeah, it would be on the table as the project develops.
So, there would be private land that becomes public land, right? And right now, on that private land, there are no grazing allotments, I mean, the private landowner can use it as grazing, but would there be new grazing allotments instituted?
First of all, I should introduce the owner, Tom Davis, and Vicki Davis sitting to my left here.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, there.
Right now, the private land, uh, is including, is included in a grazing allotment, and it is grazed both on private and public, but as we've discussed a while back, there is, you know, there is some, uh, circumstances, because of the private-public ownership, that make it hard for it to be grazed and managed, I'll just say that, but yes.
So, as we can see already, we're kinda not gonna be able to see the clarity here, that's kind of, you know?
That would be dealt.
So, you cannot say that there will be grazing allotments, that's not up to you?
It's not up to the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, no, it would be a Forest Service decision, but I have seen in the past these types of projects where it did happen, yeah. I would like to introduce Jeanie Holmred, she's from the Forest Service, to answer any technical questions. She's kinda subbing for the District Ranger and Assistant District Ranger, couldn't be here.
So, I'm just facilitating some conversation, and I know you might not have the answers, and we understand that if you don't have the answers, you might not publicly be able to comment, but if you can get that information to us, or answer the question now, that'd be great. Okay, good, alright, so, again, if the private landowner, there, if, in fact, new grazing allotments were allocated, or allotted, would the neighboring private landowners have first rights of refusal? And what I mean by that is if there's someone nearby that is grazing, and, uh, that right comes up for them to get on that grazing allotment, will they have first rights of refusal over someone that wanted to be from towns in Montana, and lease it, or get into that allotment? Would the landowners have first rights of refusal?
I can get you that answer, I don't have it.
Perfect, thank you. Drew Best Manager.
You're on the set with you.
We might just, just say it here, that's a big mission, sorry. Will there be active planning for timber management on what will become, through the acquisition, all public land? Will the Forest Service actively pursue managing the timber?
And I will get you that.
Okay, so that's something we would really like to know. This is a very important subject in Maricopa County right now. And, um, I, I can guarantee you're probably not gonna be answered this question, but could this acquisition lead to any negative impact on sand fire and their exploration and eventual operation of their mine? And I think that's a really good question, if, okay, so, you feel pretty confident that nothing would come around in the circle and maybe cause problem with what we feel could be a pretty good increase of our tax base in Maricopa?
Well, I own mineral rights on the mine, so I wouldn't cut my foot off.
Okay, so you know, you know, some of the lot of people, some of the people, we don't, we don't, might not know how all that kinda works, okay, Tom? So, thank you. On the acquisition, there are some offset corners on the west end. Have them been confirmed as offset corners?
Not on the ground, unless anybody else has any information. It, um, from a spatial perspective, yes, but to actually go out and find those corners.
Is it difficult?
But, yes, no, it's, it's not difficult to do, but, but yes, we believe that those are offset corners.
Okay, and the reason I ask that question is that I can successfully conclude that those were, that this acquisition could eventually, and would, open up up to eleven thousand acres. Correct? If those corners weren't offset, that, the acquisition would actually decrease the amount of acres that would be available to the public, okay? So, that's my question, is that if they're not offset, then we would have to tell the public that, in fact, this acquisition would lead to only nine thousand acres, or what might be. Again, I'm not perfectly clear on it, but I just know that if we were gonna encourage public recreation and tourism, more acres would be seemingly, in our mind, a good thing for public recreation, and maybe more desirable, but that's all speculative on my part, okay?
I'd like to comment, just in addition, we do need to ground proof that, but on the Montana cadastro, the maps that we have, it does look like they're offset, and so, my calculations do include access to those other lands.
Well, we don't know for sure if they're coming out.
Yeah, we can get out the ground proof.
Okay, 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 well, you know, again, like I said, we're just trying to get things going here, um, so, let me just make sure I get to my, now, as we know in the county, we feel that roads are an important aspect, or infrastructure, for fighting fires, okay? Wildfires could potentially go into there, and there are roads there, and we have seen in the past where there's been an obliteration of roads in the United States Forest Service, and we would like to know that those roads, in fact, will not be obliterated, or they would be obliterated. Because if they were not, and in the event of a fire, it could potentially make it more difficult to get in there to protect the land that is our land, okay? And again, I'm assuming the acquisition has been completed in that regard. So, unfortunately, my logistics of my speech kind of haven't worked out, because you weren't able to answer all my questions, but let's just say, potentially, we're gonna have grazing, we potentially will have logging, we'll potentially not, we won't affect the mine, you know? There's gonna be public recreational opportunities, and they understand that roads are an important part of fighting wildfires. So, if this were to work in that best-case scenario, it would kinda be a win-win for all of us, because we, our voice of the people, have said that those four, five things are important to us. Okay, alright, so with that said, and again, I'm gonna work this quicker than I initially expected, because I know we have a lot of people here. I'm gonna go through a few facts real quick, because what you provided me with information prior is, um, important. You said a third of the county is owned publicly, right? Chairman Brewer, do you know how many acres are in Maricopa County? Off the top of your head?
Uh, not, not exactly, about a million and a half.
Yep, perfect, you're exactly right. Of that, the private acres are, you probably don't know the number, but it's nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven, no, excuse me, nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, give or take, which makes it sixty-two percent of Maricopa County is owned privately, right? Okay, the public acres, for your information, is thirty-eight percent, which is five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand acres.
See, I only have, but mine, I, do you include BLN and state?
Okay, that, that number does include all that? Of which, four-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand of it is United States Forest Service.
I have four-eighty-six, so we're close.
Okay, we're getting pretty close, alright? In the acquisition, we're looking at private land going into public land, four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-three acres, correct?
Yes.
Okay, if we calculate that mathematics, we are here discussing point-zero-zero-three percent of the acres in Maricopa County. So, we're not talking a huge amount, so, in fact, I take that number, four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-three, and I switch it in and trade it off, the percentage of private ownership in Maricopa County does not change, but by a fraction. It stays at sixty-two percent. Public would stay at thirty-eight percent. So, even though your argument is that they, we don't need to give them more land to manage, in this respect, in this acquisition, it's really minuscule. It's not a lot of land that we're talking about here, okay? I want to keep in mind that point-zero-zero-three for later on, okay? Now, I'm seeing this might be off the beaten path, but during any time of the Tenderfoot Land Acquisition, did the commissioners publicly support the acquisition?
Uh, not this last acquisition.
Okay, but, okay, so, that's another thing that people might understand, the Tenderfoot Land Acquisition was over a duration of eight years or so, and?
Seven years, nine phases.
Okay, nine phases, so, at the beginning of that acquisition, in the first part of it, the county commissioners, did you?
I wasn't here then, I couldn't answer, I can't.
Mr. Brewer, would you be able to comment on that?
Uh, I, we didn't object to it at ti, at that time, later on, we, we did, but.
Okay, later on, you did, okay, but at the very beginning of it?
We didn't, we didn't.
Okay. Would you be able to, off the top of your heads, tell me if there was, in fact, a loss in tax revenue because of the Tenderfoot Land Acquisition?
You know?
I know it's a hard number, because you weren't expecting it, sorry.
Well, no, that's fine, I, I can answer that, there, there usually is not a loss in tax revenue, provided the government pays their pilt and their secure rural schools, which they usually do, usually they pay it. But, but here's the thing, they don't have to, and a couple of years ago, they didn't pay it.
Okay.
So, as a consequence, we do not ever budget our pilt revenue and SRS money, because you can't be certain of it, you can only, you only dare budget what you know you're gonna get, and that's property tax, from people that own property, so, that's why it's not a certainty.
Okay, it's not a certainty, so he's saying that the pilt, and I don't know if anyone in here knows what that means, it's payment in lieu of taxes, and how that is arranged is that the government understands that some counties, well, to give you a little background, all cap, states in the union, with the exception of Rhode Island, are given allocations if the funds are available, and they look at, by county, how much public land is in that county, and that allocation will show, reflect that. If a county has very, very little public land, if, in fact, the pilt is allocated and is granted, you're most likely gonna see where their allocation is lower compared to a county that has a large amount of public land, and in fact, their granted money, then you'll see that pilt go up. But, I will agree with the commissioners, it is not a guarantee.
Can I ask a question regarding that, did that money ever get paid, or was it just delayed?
I will, oh, she's on like?
Yeah, it was eventually paid.
It was.
And was that through something other than the pilt, was it through like a other recuperating fund of some sort?
No, they just finally requisitioned the money, and it was finally paid.
Okay, alright. Would the commissioners, though, in fact, agree that now that over seven and a half years, the Tenderfoot Land Acquisition, and whether you count what type of access it is, it has forever secured locals and others' right to visit what I call the Tenderfoot Falls?
I can answer that, because I don't know that.
Okay, well, I will, uh, unless the agency changes it, we, Maricopa County residents, can legally drive down nearly to the Tenderfoot Falls, and without crossing any type of property. In the past, we had a very willing landowner that didn't work with the local to allow them go through there, you know? So, that was then right of the landowner to do that, but right now, we're in a situation where we can use that, okay? We're gonna talk just a little bit of pilt, because I would say, agree, it, it's not guaranteed funds. But I have looked at the Department of Interior, and, and I would highly encourage the commissioners to provide information to me that I may be misinformed, but as I look through that, you will see that Maricopa County, I did a ten-year deal, two thousand and seven to two thousand and seventeen, I took those numbers, and you will see, as we got into the Tenderfoot Acquisition, we were seeing, I'm not saying the funding, but the acres there was increasing, so that means, when that private ownership went into public, we were seeing the acres go up. The average allocation that we did receive over that period of time was one-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. Ten years gives you about one-point-eight million dollars that we, Maricopa County, received in pilt funding. Those, I would agree with the commissioners that to speculate that those funds are guaranteed, and to take that into consideration during budget allocation, I would agree, that's tough. But we have seen over the course of ten years, that the government has not pulled that funding. And I will add that if they pull the funding from Maricopa County, they're gonna pull the funding from the other fifty-five counties in the, in the state, and they're not gonna say, well, Maricopa County, we're not gonna fund that. If that funding goes away, it goes away for everybody, alright? Are you aware if pilt has been allocated for two thousand and eighteen?
Not aware.
Well, according to the Department of Interior, and obviously, it's on, uh, a website through the Department of Interior, and when I saw this number, I was very skeptical, and I would hope we can together come up with this number, but you've been allotted, in Maricopa County, three-hundred-and-six thousand dollars in pilt funding. I was like, wow, that's allotted, that's a major difference between a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars.
Is that included, SRS?
That's just pilt, so, when that increased like that, I was like, well, that can't be correct. So, what I started reading my research to, is looking at other counties, and in fact, you've seen that exponential increase in other counties as well. The funding has been increasing.
So, it, it, all along here, uh, last, last year was one-seventy-nine, one-seventy-eight, one-seventy-four, one-seventy-four,
One-sixty.
Eighty, one-sixty-four, uh, one-eighty-nine, and then one-fifty-nine. Why did it suddenly go up, I don't know.
Yeah, neither do I, and I, I can't answer that question for you, Commissioner. But, I'm hoping that for the sake of Maricopa County, that that three-hundred-and-six thousand dollars is, in fact, what is gonna be allocated to you, okay? Now, honestly, I'm at the point where I'm gonna be able to turn it over. I have one more question, and I will have one comment, and, um, again, people, I'm not here to create controversy, I'm trying to bring forth information, but this, to me, is a very important question, because I am a firm believer of private property rights, a firm believer. Chairman Brewer, I can say it twice, if you need me to, because it is. Chairman Brewer, I can say it twice, if you need me to, cause it is a lengthy question. Is it in the best interest, appropriate, and perhaps ethical, for the commissioners of any county, let alone Mark, to influence, dictate, or be a decisive factor to whom or what entities a private landowner wishes to sell their personal property? You want me to repeat it while we're done?
No, I, I understand your question. Um, I guess I would answer that, no, I don't think anybody should tell a private person what they can do with their property. But, that does not change the fact that I don't believe the Forest Service owns private property.
Thank you, and, I mean, that's why we're here today. Um, I would encourage you to um, to look at case studies that prove that the Forest Service shouldn't have more land, because that's really in the eye of the beholder.
That they should have more land?
That, no, no, I would encourage the commissioners to see if they could come up with some case studies that are actually showing that, or having proof showing that the Forest Service is in fact, not managing the land they have, they have enough to manage. Because, that's a pretty broad statement, are you saying, and so, are they, they, they have enough land, they have given them more land to manage? Are they in fact, mismanaging, or are they not able to manage it for timber? Is it for recreation, is it for grass, is it for hydrology, is it for wildlife? I think it's a really big spectrum that we can ideologically or philosophically compare and contrast as whether or not the United States Forest Service is in fact, and then I would furthermore encourage the commissioners to provide evidence that the private landowner that is holding the land, or that pri- if it did go from private to private, are you guaranteeing that that private landowner will manage it insofar of the ideological perspective that the county commissioners may have? You know, because we can't guarantee that a landowner, like I said, I'm a firm believer of private property rights, but in fact, who measures if you're managing your land right? You know, and I think it's just a really fluffy question that makes it hard for people to understand, okay? So, I'm just, it's an encouragement on my part, but it does allow me, as, one thing to remember. How many registered voters are there in Mark County, do you know? In Mark County, there's one thousand one hundred and forty-four registered voters. That means my opinion, Ben Hogan's opinion, means one of one thousand one hundred and forty-four people. And that is not a majority, and a majority is what is the voice of the people. And if the majority of the people support or not support or whatever, then they can give you insight as to whether or not you should or should not support it. My opinion, now, this is my opinion, I love Sheep Creek Canyon, I love angling. And I highly encourage the commissioners of Mark County to stay neutral on this matter, because the Holschel Sheep Creek Land Acquisition could potentially lead to an impact on our commerce. And I believe commerce in Mark County, in the city of White Suffer Springs, may not be, as you said, as important as grazing and timber, but I feel that it is. So, thank you for your time, guys, I really do appreciate it. Thank you, folks, yep.
Alright, turn around.
Thank you. If you don't mind him to sit down.
Is everybody okay with the fans being on, it's not too loud?
Go ahead. Well, again, uh, thank you Chairman Brewer and Commissioner Hurwitz in Townsend, thank you for the time you speak today. Um, I wanna again, mention I'm Mike Wheeler, I'm the Land Program Manager of the Elk Foundation, I was hired by the founders in nineteen eighty-nine, so been around a while. Been a real great journey, and great to uh, work in this field, and I've had the opportunity to work at some great projects, the Tenderfoot was mentioned, and you guys remember me from that, years ago, a great project. Um, so, uh, I'm here to provide information on the project, uh, from the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation perspective. Last month, I guess, uh, the Forest Service and Fish and Parks were able to come here and speak to you, uh, to the commission. I wasn't able to make it, so I apologize for that. Uh, it's really important to the Elk Foundation, when we start working on projects, and it does depend on where the project's at, whether we come in right at the beginning, or after we know the project is gonna happen, we don't wanna get everybody excited like today, because this project, somebody said earlier, there's about a hundred reasons this project could fall through, and it may. But, um, I apologize for not being here last month, and that's why I'm here today. Out of courtesy, we'd like to, uh, bring the commission all across the state and across the nation, in fact, uh, the commissioners, because it's so important of what you do, and thank you for your public service, but, uh, so I'm here to tell you where this project's at, and it is really, really, really early in the process. And I'll explain why we're introducing the project to you so soon, I think they touched on it last month. But, so I wanna hit on some of the project highlights again, from the Elk Foundation's perspective, answer any questions you have, and uh, explain why your support is important, and I speak to, again, I speak to lots, a lot of county commissions, a lot of local, state, federal government entities about these kind of projects, I wanna share with you why it is important. And uh, my goal here is with maybe your support, or at least neutrality, as I was mentioned, is to build the strongest project possible to go after congressionally obligated funds, the Land and Water Conservation Fund. So, when I get assigned to a project, it's to build the best project possible, and quite frankly, I get project calls every week. And the Elk Foundation only does a few projects here and there, cause I'm really the only guy that covers Montana, and they really have to be the biggest, not necessarily the biggest, but the best, most important projects out there, because we have to compete for all these dollars. And really important is that we have willing landowners that believe in the Elk Foundation and our vision, and what might happen with this property. And with that, I'd like to again introduce Tom and Vicky Davis, the landowners, Tom and Vicky, thank you for being here. I very seldom have called landowners to come to a commission meeting with, with me, but I'm glad I did, cause I guess the interest is from probably your minutes posted to paper, I had nothing to do with this, and I, I'm really surprised. I really love that there's this kind of public engagement, though, too, I wish this happened more often, but I'll just say that on the onset. So, I got just a couple notes I wanna touch on. Um, again, we, the Elk Foundation obviously is going to the county commission for support, and that's why I'm here. Um, but again, the timing is why I'm here, and I wanna make it clear to everybody, um, I'm kind of representing the Davis family, they've asked the Elk Foundation to explore the opportunity to purchase their property, and um, ultimately convey the property to the Lewis and Clark National Forest. The Elk Foundation doesn't hold property long-term, but we're kind of a catalyst, we'll get in, get out in front, get appraisals going, do due diligence, do purchase options, and try to lock up the deal, uh, so that we can raise the money to get it done. Right now, this property is listed on premier, uh, realty. I found out about it from some people in the audience, hey, this property's for sale, have you looked at this yet? And I said, no, tell me about it, and immediately, when we started looking at it, wow, it looked like the type of project that could compete nationally for Land and Water Conservation Fund. So, immediately, I jumped in a few months ago, we met with all the families, and wow, what a, a joy that was to hear the history of the Holmstrom family, and the Davis family, and this whole property. And by the way, we're calling this, from, from here on out, you should know this project as the Holmstrom Sheep Creek Access Acquisition. That's what, what we're calling this project, so, so we're all talking about the same project, cause we do have another project here, as you know, uh, Tenderfoot Two Acquisition going on. Um, so, um, yeah, the property's for sale right now, and I'm sure Tom and Vicky would entertain anybody with seven point five million, you know? We're hoping they don't, and they'll give us time to work on it, but, um, that's the kind of pressures we're under here. And because of the timing here, what I mean by timing, coming up here in a couple of weeks, Land and Water Conservation Fund proposals are due by the Regional Office in Missoula. They're due in a couple of weeks, the end of December. We knew this deadline was coming up, so we're under pressure to come up with the best projects in Montana possible, so that we can get that two hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty million dollars that's allocated from Congress, from offshore oil and uh, gas leases, that's, that Land and Water Conservation Fund, that's where it comes from, but that fund is used for projects like this. So, we're under pressure, uh, to get this proposal into the Regional Office, so that it can be proposed for those Land and Water Conservation Funds. So, again, um, to build a strong Land and Water Conservation Fund project, we look at what wildlife, and there's lots of criteria, but it's fish and wildlife, uh, a- aspects, it's public access, it's location, it's, uh, you know, uh, the ownership there, private-public ownership, things like that, those are some of the criteria, endangered species. So, I'm trying to build a strong project, and that's why I'm here talking to you guys, yes, Commissioner?
Will, will the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation come up with any money to give to the Davises?
Uh, we sure hope so, we sure hope so. Projects can work out differently, in a lot of different ways, if we can leave money on the ground, or if we can raise money, or get all the Land and Water Conservation Fund to pay for it, we're glad to use all that money if we can.
But, but to hold it, will you, will you give Davis's money to buy it?
Well, I hate to get into personal negotiations necessarily with the family.
I have a follow-up question to that.
But, my, my answer, Commissioner, is yes, our purchase options usually take some option money down, because we're asking them to take it off the market and hold it for us while we do the appraisal, do the due diligence, and prepare the project.
I understand that. When, when the Forest Service purchases this property
Yeah.
at some point, will Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation make a profit?
Oh, good question, um, no, uh, in all full transparency and disclosure here, the Elk Foundation doesn't make profits on any of these deals. Um, a lot of times, our deals will buy it at appraised value and sell it for appraised value. Now, sometimes, the landowners and people can make donations to the Elk Foundation to cover our costs, and that can happen. Uh, if, if, a family that I was doing a deal with wanted to donate to the Elk Foundation, when the deal's over, it's their money, they wanna say, hey, we'll give you fifty grand to pay for this, all your time and effort, I'd love to see that, but no, we wouldn't say a profit. But, if the Elk Foundation recoup costs by a donation, or some, maybe buy the property less than appraised value and sell at appraised value, sometimes that happens, but every deal is different, you know, every deal is different that I negotiate, but, does that help?
Yep.
Good question, good question, I'm glad to answer that. Um, so where was I? Building a really strong Land and Water Conservation Project, so, um, that's what I'm here for, and that's what we're trying to do, so that we can get this submitted in a couple of weeks, to go compete with a whole bunch of other projects across the country, right? So, I'm kinda hoping that Mark County, including the commission and everybody, is pleased that there's these type of projects in this county. I love Mark County, and the fact that we had projects like Tenderfoot, one and two, that competed so well for these really competitive limited dollars, that says a lot for where we live, right? I mean, Smith River, the hunting, the fishing, the recreational values here, this is a special place. So, anyway, having said that, um, a couple, uh, of the highlights of the project, obviously, I won't get into the detail, details of the wildlife habitat, but with the Elk Foundation, right, it's very key, elk, deer, winter range, calving areas, and great habitat. Um, I will mention the great fisheries habitat, we're possibly gonna be able to conserve and open up seven miles of Sheep Creek, and I think there's another four streams that are on this property. Um, but the location of this property makes it really valuable, with the checkerboard pattern, if you've seen a map, or that it's located within the Forest Service boundary, that all makes it really valuable, because when the Elk Foundation looks for projects, we're not gonna own it long ti- long term, we don't own properties, we do look for a takeout partner. It could be the state, could be the feds, it could be another conservation buyer with a conservation event, but we look at conserving habitat and improving public access. Now, having said that, public access, I'm sure you've all noticed the last four or five years, public access to our public lands is a huge topic. I was right in the middle of that with the Elk Foundation four or five years ago, with all our congressional representatives, and now you're hearing talking about it during election campaigns, it's a big topic. Um, I left with you, um, brochures about our Access Elk Country initiatives, we're working hard to open up landlocked public lands. And there's been several studies over the last year that will show you, one of them shows nearly two million acres of landlocked public lands in Montana, that's the highest in any state in the nation, so we work hard, the Elk Foundation, with our partners and private lander- landowners to open up public lands. We all should be able to use it. Who'd have thought we'd be happy to work on that, but we are today, and so this project, and you guys asked some questions about that, that's why this rose to the top, because of the public access. The figure I am using, considering those, those, uh, corners there are offset, is hopefully, this will improve and open up nearly, uh, uh, over eleven thousand acres of private and public lands, that's huge. But, we do need to prove that, but that's the acres I'm using right now. Um, and we know that the hunters, the anglers, the wildlife watchers, bikers, hikers, horseback riders, and all that, love these types of projects, we get a lot of support from that. Um, there's a lot of value here, for example, the economic benefits to the county. I was pretty surprised when I looked at the Hunting District data here, there's over twenty thousand deer and elk hunter days each year in your county. We all know how big hunting is, but that's huge, right? Um, and, and of course, I mentioned the seven point three miles of Sheep Creek, but with Sheep Creek and these tributaries going into the Smith River, that also really makes this project important. Smith River is important to Montana, and it's actually one of the more popular floating, uh, permits in the country, but.
Excuse me?
Yes.
So, you're saying that this acquisition is important to the Smith River?
I do.
In what way is this gonna improve? I mean, by public ownership of Sheep Creek, is that gonna improve the Smith?
Okay, great, great question. This project, if we can purchase this land, we will be conserving, um, uh, over three miles of Sheep Creek, okay?
What does that mean, conserve?
That means that we know it's gonna be, uh, bought by the Elk Foundation, go into public ownership, and they will be managing it for its fishery and wildlife benefits. Okay, there'll be an emphasis that there won't be, there won't be broken up, and, you know, who knows, uh, turned into little ranches down the road, or some other subdivision, or some other land use, but when it goes into public ownership, that's one of our best plays, that the state, our state wildlife agency, or Forest Service, or BLM, that's one of our, the Elk Foundation's best partners to conserve property, if we can't own it, we trust our state and federal partners to manage it for the wildlife habitat and fishery habitat, plus manage the public access, plus do all the things to manage those lands. I'm not saying that a private landowner couldn't also do that, but right now, I'm working to buy this land and put it into public ownership, because there is no guarantee if it was in private ownership, and you might lose that public access. Does that help?
A little bit, I guess, I have one more question before you go, I could continue. So, is Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation's mission to, for elk habitat or for public access?
The mission of the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation is to ensure the future of elk, other wildlife, and their habitat, and our hunting heritage. And so, that's where the public access comes in. I can give you a little data, and it's also in here. Um, we know that one of the number one obstacles for new hunters to start hunting is the lack of quality places to hunt, public access to hunt.
I gotta stop you.
Okay.
Right there. Do you look at that map over there?
Sure.
Do you see all that green on that map?
Yeah.
You see that? That's National Forests.
Right.
There's four hundred and eighty-six thousand acres of that.
Right.
So, don't, you, you can't tell us that this is gonna really help public access. There's public access on four hundred and eighty-six thousand acres out of a million and a half acres. So, come on, this is just blowing smoke.
Excuse me, Commissioner, but I have to disagree.
I understand you do.
This project will, uh, will improve public access to private and public lands if it happens. It's a drop in the bucket, I will give you that, but we're gonna do whatever we can to improve public access. I will repeat the studies that have shown Montana is the number one, besides, you, you would've thought we'd be thinking about public access, right, with all that green? But, Montana has lost access to nearly two million acres in Mon- in, uh, in Montana, and who knows where that's gonna go? So, we have to, we have to protect those public access points where we can.
So, so it seems to me that the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation is more concerned about access than about making better habitat?
No, I wouldn't say that, we have to start with habitat conservation, that is our prior, primary part of our mission, but public access is raised up there to where it's a real big emphasis. We've always worked to improve and, and protect public access, but now, with the latest studies, and I, I left a couple of them for you, and I can get you more data, but with the latest studies, we realized that, we probably oughta be paying attention to this, cause the land ownership in Montana's changing drastically, as we all know, private land ownership, right? So, we have to watch it, and, you know, uh, assist with public land management, and try to help where we can.
That, that National Forest there, uh, kind of on the north side, there's twenty-six thousand acres of. thousand acres of National Forests there, not far from Tenderfoot. In fact, when you're on the Tenderfoot Divide, you can look to the east, it's brown, isn't it? You've seen it, it's dying.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think that that might cause a fire someday? Do, do you think that the Forest Service, we've talked to it a number of times, not picking on the Forest Service, because they do everything they can do to manage our forests. They're forest scientists, but they are stopped.
Right.
At every turn by environmentalists who don't want to see any logging. So what do you have? You have thousands of National Forests acres in our county that are over matured, what's going to happen? Do you think they'll burn?
I, I think the answer is public involvement, like you see here today. When the public's involved in decisions on our, on our, on our national, federal, and state lands, then things can happen. You're right, we, those issues, uh, the litigation of management of our public lands, sure, it's a serious issue, I'm not going to comment on that today, I'm not here to comment on that, but I, I understand what you're saying.
But that's part of what went into our thinking, when, when you said, well, I think the Forest Service should buy this, because they don't, they're not able to properly manage the forest that they have. They want to, they know how to, they can.
Well, I, I would disagree, I think that, that there is a lot of great examples of management of our public and state lands across Montana, across this country. I would just disagree that there's lots of great examples, and I can give you some great examples, but I don't want to use my time.
Well, in our county, they have actually gotten to do, put up some small sales, very small, and it's wonderful to see. Every now and then a little lot goes down our street.
Sure, I know, we all know what's happened over the last fifty years, I, I hear you, I understand.
Fifty, fifty years, fifty years of the Forest Service being strangled by environmental groups.
You know, Commissioner, you bring up a really good point, and I'm just going to throw out that when we see checkerboard pattern out there, that does raise the level of awareness, like the Tenderfoot was, with all that checkerboard ownership, and historical ownership, we know why it's there. That's why this one came on our radar, because if we can get in and we've got a willing landowner that wants to sell the property, and we can get in there and raise the money and make it public land, um, it does allow for more, you know, it can, it can allow for better management, maybe better timber gra, maybe better timber management, maybe better grazing system, less confusion for the public that want to use those existing public lands, better enforcement, fire management, all those kind of things, spraying weeds, sometimes, uh, that management can increase by blocking up that ownership. We'd like to recognize that.
Couldn't, couldn't that be accomplished by a land slot between private and public without spending seven and a half million tax dollars?
Well, remember, that's not tax dollars.
It is, too.
Yes, it is. This is Land and Water Conservation Fund, it doesn't come from taxpayers.
Who does it come from?
It comes from oil and gas leases offshore, okay? That's why it comes from the leases the government leases.
I can't.
That's funny, the philosophy is, you're taking something from the environment, and now you want to conserve some of the environment, so it's, it's an offset, but it's not tax dollars, it's leases.
I guess that's your definition of tax.
Right.
I said it's government money.
Yeah.
Government part of town.
Sure, and a lot of that Land and Water Conservation Fund is being used for purposes other than what it was set out to be. If we didn't have the Land and Water Conservation Fund, you'd be losing a lot of great projects, city parks, county parks, public parks, uh, fishing access, hunting access, all those kind of things that that fund provides. And I will say that Land and Water Conservation Fund, it ran out four years ago, they extended it two years, and we do have, uh, I think unanimous support from our congressional representative in Montana to reauthorize fully Land and Water Conservation Fund. There's huge support for that across the state, just FYI. It's a really valuable tool. If we didn't have it, this kind of stuff would really be hard to do, these kind of projects.
Okay, can we, Mr. Chairman?
Can we not? It sounds, it sounds to me like we should turn the whole county over to the federal government.
There must be other people here who would like to speak.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I came over from Brazil just to speak to you all.
Yeah, all these people came in here to speak, too. So wrap it up.
Go ahead. Um, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to share with you a couple, uh, just things that stood out to me. Um, from an economic benefit to the county, I'm trying to provide information that might give you a big picture, so that everyone can ask for your support. In Hunting District two sixteen, there was thousands of deer and elk hunter days each fall. Um, because all of these streams and this watershed flows into the Smith River, we'd like to say that...
Where is, where is two sixteen?
Hunter District two sixteen?
Yes.
I'm going to defer to my fish, falls, and parks, wildlife biologist, to answer that question, Jay, can you do that?
Project six, four sixteen.
Oh, did I say four sixteen, I'm sorry.
Four sixteen, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, yeah, so the, you know, the amount of hunting here is really popular, uh, because this, the, the watershed flows in the Smith River, we think it's an important project for that, for that. The hunting and fishing Sheep Creek area generate about eight million dollars to the local white-solfar spring's economy each year. That was taken by some studies Lewis and King, Lewis and King of two thousand fourteen. So the point is, recreation, hunting, fishing brings a lot of dollars into the county. So, uh, I'd like to just finish up with asking the White Solfar, or the, uh, Mar County Commission for a little support on this great project, and, uh, if that's not possible, just that we could have on record that you would be neutral or not oppose the project, because right now, what we're trying to do is build a great project for these landowners, these willing landowners, to compete for these funding, so they can sell their land to the Elk Foundation. So that's what I'd like to ask you to consider, and with that, I guess I would ask Tom and Vicki if they had anything to add. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm not sure if you had anything to add.
Well, I don't know, I guess I would ask the commissioners if, uh, I'm sure you're all landowners, and if something happened in your family, or the decision was made that you had to sell the property, and, and you could sell it for a million dollars to this, but you went to the commissioners, and you could get a fair appraised value, and they said no, would you be upset with the commissioners?
Well, I, any, as a landowner, I don't want anybody to tell me who I can or cannot sell my land.
Thank you very much.
I mean, that's...
That's what I feel.
That's private property rights.
That's what I feel, thank you very much.
Yep. So why, why is it a question to say yes or no?
I, I can answer that, that's, I was, I should have answered that question earlier, Commissioner. Um, as these land and water conservation funds go up the chain and compete for these dollars, um, they're congressionally appropriated dollars, and a lot of times, the governor, the congressional delegation, and others, well, one of the first things they'll ask, because, uh, they're interested in the local support and the local county support for projects, they'll ask, what does the county commission say? How do they feel about this project? And if Mar County Commission, right now, can tell me they're going to oppose it, this project won't go any further. We won't propose this for land and water conservation.
We have a resolution here from the Conservation District, Montana Association of Conservation District, opposing the opposition of land.
Well, I mean...
So, I don't think we're, it's right for us in the spot to say we even, they can or can't sell your land. So we don't, I don't think I have that power.
So does that mean that you will give us no opposition?
Sell your land, according to you, go ahead.
And so the commissioners are on record as saying...
It's not my place to say yes or no.
But you would not be a part of one of them.
I don't think you have a current Mar County income, uh, elk habitat. I think private ownership has the right, and one of the rights to sell your property for however much you can get for it, but, uh, I don't believe we have, turn all Mar County over to the federal government. It's managed.
Okay, so could I, could I, um, quick clarifying? So, um, we would ask the landowners and the Elk Foundation, on the record, would the county commission support the project, whether with a vote or whatever, or letter, and if they can't, um, would you go on the record to say, if you were asked in the future, will you be neutral on the project if somebody asked, or at least not in opposition for this small project, where you know it's going to go into federal ownership? Those are the important questions. If we know that you're going to be neutral, or at least not oppose it, it probably wouldn't hurt our chances to compete. So if you know right now you're going to take a vote now, uh, that would be good to know, because we'd probably have to stop the process if you opposed it.
Or...
Thank you, thank you.
I have one question for you. If, if, I mean, it's known that we're going to, the Forest Service is going to point out to them, why do you guys purchase it and sell it to the Forest Service? Why can't the Forest Service get to sell it?
Great question, great question, well...
I mean, what's the process side, it's probably...
We can move fast. The Forest Service has no money right now. The Davis family wants to sell it right now. Um, somebody could buy it right now, so if, what, what the first thing that's going to happen is, first of all, are they willing to work with this? And they said yes, they're, they're at least going to give us time to work up a purchase option, get the property appraised, and see if it meets their selling price, and if it does, then maybe we'll have a deal.
Well, if they don't, the Forest Service does...
The reason it can is, there's a federal law that says the United States government cannot pay over appraised value for any piece of property.
That's actually...
Right now, it's probably listed over appraised value.
Well, we don't know that, we don't, we don't know that... Excuse me, we don't know that it's over appraised value. The things we have to do first, well, the reason why we're in front is I can move really fast. The Elk Foundation, the private entity, with the federal, state government, they have a lot more hoops to jump through, but we can move fast and work with the landowners, put them on board, maybe get a purchase option tied up, while we do an appraisal, and so they help sell to somebody else, at least give us time. And then if the appraised value comes in, we can strike a deal, and then we can start raising money. We try to have, we try to have Forest Service or our takeout partners on board, because we don't want to buy it if we know they're not going to get it, but we can raise the money, we can buy it from and hold it until the Forest, Forest Service is ready, so we kind of move fast and raise money and make it happen.
Good question, one other question, the hunter numbers...
Yes.
In hunter numbers in the last five years, have they significantly increased, decreased?
Good question, I rely on my state wildlife agency rep to answer that, or you might have to get back to him, I don't know. Did you hear the question?
In four sixteen, doesn't have a shoulder season, that's what we're seeing, the numbers in four sixteen just kind of creep and upwards a little bit, but it's not as dramatic, it's like a customer, or it's really gentle, but it's probably a district.
Okay, Rob, my head?
Oh, wait, my head.
Um, Tom?
I guess not at this time, but I would like to reserve to answer questions or whatever.
Finals golfer?
I just, uh, I'm, I'm San Antonio, I grew up in Atlanta, Montana, and I just think the opportunities for, to open up more public land, there's going to be fewer and fewer, I think, and we all see that this, it's getting busier and busier in Mar County, more and more people, so any opportunity to open up more public lands, I think is, I'd rate it good.
Well, Dan Bobbey?
Well, I guess, uh, I'm kind of neutralized to a certain amount, but I do believe in, in protecting the Smith River. I've got relatives that are down along the Gallup River, I've seen what's happened to all these other rivers than any of us in this country. Pretty naive if you don't believe that's going to happen, and that is, awful, awful nice sections of Sheep Creek. I fish it myself, hike down to it, I hike, and there, the, the chances that that could get developed in the near future, I think would be very high. I think it'd be a shame not to figure some way to protect it for the citizens and for the people in, in the country. I really honestly believe that.
Uh, Elena, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to, um, speak a little bit to just the impact, um, on our, on our business, that, you know, I'm really impressed by, as like I'm starting to work through numbers, and, um, you know, the economic impact in town of people using public lands and coming here for, to hunt and fish. Um, I'm, I'm actually blown away, honestly, I mean, I feel like I'm tired at the end of the day, after having, after having a whole bunch of people in this door, but I'm, our, our business during, you know, float season and during hunting season, um, more than triples from the rest of the year, and I don't, and I, I happen to know as well that, you know, outdoor tourism is, uh, about the second leading industry in our state, seven point one billion dollars, and I just think public lands is a great thing. I don't know what, you know, seven thousand acres, four thousand acres, if that, what that equates to in dollars, nobody could ever really know that, you know, but I'm just, I'm, I'm all about public land, so I think that it's a really good thing for our community. I, I just, uh, I, I would never want that to be a detriment to other, um, you know, to surrounding landowners, that's something I know people have brought up that I'm, you know, definitely concerned about, but, um, I'll speak to my little slice of, of the pie of Mar County, that, that, that ecotourism is really real, and we should stop pretending like it's not, because it's huge.
Elena, is, is a half a million acres of public land enough, or not quite enough?
I don't think anybody can say that. I mean, public land is, and conservation is, is, I mean, is sort of, if you just want to roll around and pretend like it's not important, then it will be taken from you, as all good things are. I mean, I think that's really real, I think that it's important to stay ahead of the curve. Um, I, I understand the, the point about, um, you know, I'm a libertarian, I hated government, I get it, you know, but I definitely, I definitely think that, um, having a say as a public person, having ownership over that, um, does, does mean that there is power in that, in those numbers, to hopefully be able to help manage, maybe we could have more meetings like this, I don't know.
I appreciate that. Have you noticed the federal government selling any land?
Uh, not that I've noticed. That's my update, thank you.
Uh, Maggie's gone.
I think I'm good for right now.
Okay. And now I have a maybe that I can't read. Somebody better read this.
Dad.
Oh, I bet. Did you, did you go to school?
I'm good, thank you.
Um, I have a Marcus Strange from Helmand.
That's me. Um, I represent the Montana Wildlife Federation. Um, you all are wondering if I'm going to talk a lot, I'm not, I'm going to keep it short. We support this project for its wildlife, uh, qualities, as well as the access it would improve. Um, we think it's a really well put together project, and with a willing seller, um, these kind of projects don't come along very often. I'd like to submit to the county commissioners, uh, our letter of support. Um, there's a copy for each of you, as well as an official copy, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Carol Anticich from CBA.
Right here. I hunted four sixteen, I have hunted four sixteen all my life, um, and from when I was little to when it is now, it's changed a lot. I mean, all those drainages used to have elk in them, they have very few elk in them, Indian Creek, Cat Creek, Squaw Creek, all of them have, uh, all those elk have changed their habits due to agriculture, or whatever it may be, or forest conditions. Um, you know, the harvest success for elk in four sixteen, Jay would be able to answer it better than me, but I believe it's, um, below national average by quite a bit on public land. Um, on, on prime section, yes, it's, it's way above, it's quite, I think it's, it's outrageous, the, the percentage of elk and harvest statistic is way above national average. Um, I hunted roses since I was a little kid, um, there's a period of time where we couldn't hunt it, as things changed, but it's one of the fondest memories of my childhood, is hunting Rosa's property with my family, with my dad. My dad took all of our kids over, or all these kids over there to hunt. Um, you couldn't ask for a finer piece of property for elk hunting, um, and I think in four sixteen, we're lacking that kind of hunting opportunity, and if we could add that, I just, I think it's a great gift that they're offering us, and, uh, to pass this down would be a, a shame, a real shame, that's why.
Ed, did you want to talk to you, just go along through there?
Well, I'll just say that he was talking about the elk situation in Mar County, and the numbers are way down in that public land, there's no question about it. So they acquire the Sheep Creek ground, I can't see any difference there, there are a few elk there now, they're going to move right on out due to public pressure, and the local landowners, surrounding landowners... And the local landowners, surrounding landowners are gonna be pressured just as much or more than ever. And they take that out of there and give it to the national forest. It impacts the private landowner next to them, adjacent to the forest service ground because they don't fence. So it puts more fencing and various other things on the surrounding land. And anybody that's familiar with that knows good and well that those elk are not gonna stay there with all the public pressure.
For one thing, how many people are gonna hike across that creek in the last couple of weeks of hunting season and actually pack them out on your back? I, I disagree with your comment.
Okay. Uh, Robert DeBette?
First of all, I'm a firm believer in property rights. I believe that man has a right to sell his property. But I also believe that part of the problem, the elk are not in the national forests is the down timber is so bad. I tried to ride my horse through places and, and I can't get through them. Without purpleing the horse, the elk go around those places, they aren't gonna go back in there. And the, the trees are so thick, there's not vegetation for them. You have to have better habitat for your elk in the national forest if you want them to be there. And, I mean, there's a lot of things that need to change. The forest need, the forest service needs to some way get this land cleaned up and harvested timber that's good and clean up the rest of it so something else will grow.
Okay, Ben Luttrell?
I guess my whole big thing on this is, uh, when you open that up, just like couples of others have said, you can open that up to public, and I hunt a lot of public each year. When that gets opened up to public, they're just gonna get pushed onto private, same as anywhere else. There is elk on, on the public land everywhere in this county. So I, I really see no point in opening this, it's just gonna turn into the same thing over and over again.
Um, Rod?
Yeah?
Another thing, I saw the Tenderfoot land opened up. The forest service came in and they took dozers and graders down that road and opened it up so the public could get there. The first day of the season, I'll bet there were twenty campers pulled in there. People were all over the place. And a week later, there wasn't one because there wasn't any elk in there. They all pulled out. It'll be the same, it'll be the same way.
There's four things elk don't like. People would be number one, gazelles would be two, wolves would be three, and habitat would probably be four of them.
Okay, Lee, I believe it's Kinson from Livingston?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'll be short and sweet. Uh, I think seven and a half million dollars is a, a lot of money. And I'm just fundamentally opposed to the federal government applying more land until they have the budget and the manpower to really efficiently manage the land that they have right now. Thank you.
The team like that money would be better served to apply to the national debt. By reducing the national debt to the benefit, every man, woman, child. Seven point nine million dollars debt made in the way of creating that, you know, 21,000.
Uh, Jess?
Yeah, because certainly I have, I'm an emergency responder, part of the book, part of department, something like that. Is, uh, is, is that if, and I know we've talked a lot about subdivisions out there. If, if, if by happenstance this property ever does get subdivided, if you had concerns with Grassy Mountain, you will have concerns with this one. So, that should be a concern.
Boating Morris?
Well, I'm just gonna say that I'm there with Bob Rooney. If somebody like the Wilks Brothers or an outstate rich guy, outstate money comes in and buys us and they develop that two thousand acres long sheep creek, how's everybody in this room gonna feel about that too? Are you guys gonna wanna see houses and cabins all over that?
They're gonna have elk in their yard. The elk can move off them then too, right into your guys' private property.
Okay. David, do you want to speak?
Well, I'm just gonna say kind of the same thing that you guys said before, I, and this is a personal opinion, but I don't feel that the federal government needs to own any more property. And I do agree with property rights, so if this man has the right, the opportunity, I don't have any problem with that. But I would rather see that land stay in the county tax base.
Isn't, um, that land's checkboarded now, isn't it? So they're really owning it now. I mean, they can't sell, I mean, the federal government's not gonna sell those, those checkboarded areas, so.
There's more checkboarders than there is private.
Private out there.
Double.
They're already owning it, they already own it except for the sections that are, are private.
Right, we're talking about the property that's, uh, that, oh, one, uh-
Point zero zero three percent of the acres in Mark County is what we're talking about.
Sure, whatever it is, yeah. Okay, uh... Kimberly, do you think?
Well, I guess I would just echo the sentiment of Elena and say I don't want the government to own anything more than they already own. But on the other hand, I would need to see it subdivided and developed. And you just can't underestimate the power of tourism in White Sulphur Springs. It's, um, and it's hunting, it's ecotourism, that's who's coming here. And so if we have an opportunity to make that better, that's like, we have, I, from my perspective, from the donor's perspective, I mean, we just have to take every chance we can do to make that, make that better. It's, it has revived, it has revived a town that was, when I came here, a totally different town. Well, that right out of the past.
Okay, Lloyd?
Studer.
Studer!
So, I'm gonna leave you gentlemen alone. I kinda agree with everybody in the room, you know, we've got some pluses and some minuses, but I have a question, you sort of direct mountain out of foundation guy. Why donate it to the national forest? Why can't we find somewhere else to have an operation going there that you can donate that to? That will support your elk donation.
Good question. Yeah, that's a good question. I guess the quick answer is, first of all, we're not gonna donate it to them, we're gonna sell it to them. Uh, I guess I would just, the quick answer is the elk foundation, uh, the way we're set up, we don't do that now. It's nothing we could do in the future. In fact, that one time we had a hundred thousand acre range donated to us from Mexico. We managed that, hunting, all the right things for it, but the operation of that became so expensive, we eventually sold that to another buyer with a conservation easement on it. It's just, it's a, it's a different ballgame if you're saying, could the elk foundation own it, manage it for the public, or donate it to somebody else to manage besides a federal or state entity? Um, I don't think we've ever done that, actually donated property to somebody for that reason. But we have found other conservation buyers in the private sector that have bought it and conserved it with easements and sometimes provided public access. So there are lots of options, but it's a good question.
Because there's, there's so many programs out right now for deer hunters, the egg hunters, all this. Why can't we put that acreage in a supplement that can be a positive for everybody? Community would make off of it, everybody would make off of it. National forestry would make off of it, they won't have to raise some trees or anything.
Right.
But it would work.
Yeah, you know, we have a new CEO. His name is Kyle Weaver, and you should go visit with him.
Kyle Weaver?
Great question, Kyle Weaver.
Does he like to hire people like me?
All that and mention.
All right, thank you.
Creative thinker, thank you for that question.
Mr. Studer has a point though. The forest service wouldn't necessarily be the only buyer. You could sell that to a Wilks Brothers or somebody like that. With date restrictions as to what they could or couldn't do. They couldn't keep the public off or such.
Couldn't develop.
Couldn't develop, but there's lots of, lots of things. They're not, forest service is not the only buyer.
Really good point, Commissioner. And I'll, I'll just point out that that has happened before. The forest service isn't the only game in town. Uh, Fishland Parks isn't the only game, the DLM isn't the only game. Uh, and we have sold properties to private individuals with conservation buyers with access. This particular one, let's say we didn't get elk, if, if you oppose this and we don't get elk in the ECF, we may be looking for other options. But conservation buyers are hard to find because the last thing they wanna do is buy a property, put an easement on it and let the public use it. So if you want public access, the state and the feds and, and those guys are the best ones to work with because a lot of private landowners don't wanna deal with it. But good points all. Okay, I got, Steve, you didn't put whether or not you wanted to speak.
I guess I already have.
So?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
So that's everybody on the list.
Uh, no, excuse me, I was on the list.
I was, wait a minute.
Charlie, well, I, we have to get going, can, can I step up and say a few words?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so, I'm with Into the Little Belts. I'm not sure if you guys know what this is, but I have a, I was asked to talk here, so I'm gonna just read what we wrote here, just as a public statement of what our role in this is. Um, Into the Little Belts is dedicated to creating a better local econ, economy by promoting the recreation and tourism in the Little Belt Mountains and the surrounding communities. We are a not-for-profit website. This is a hobby taken home by myself, my wife, Ally, and our five children. We receive no funding for this project whatsoever. In two thousand and ten, Ben Hogan and I launched Into the Little Belts to meet the needs of the people who are looking for information online about this part of the town. Our website offers webcams, maps, business directory for small communities, journals, and local events. Our social media following is seven thousand people and we have an average of three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty visitors to our website per day. Um, our website provides up-to-date weather and safety information, but also a feeling of nostalgia and connection to our viewers. Uh, so when we learned of this land acquisition and posted it, we received an overwhelming amount of positive, positive support. And I just wanted to go with the numbers. Over thirty thousand people were reached in this post. I think it's up to, close to thirty-five thousand now, if you include the other posts. Um, within that, two hundred and ninety-five, actually I think that's over three hundred now.
Yeah.
Two hundred and ninety-five shares. Uh, there was over a hundred and sixty-eight comments directly to our page. There were ninety direct comments, so those other comments are threads, people conversing.
Conversations within the comments.
So there was nearly a hundred comments. Out of all those comments that we read, we tallied it up, there were fifty-seven people in direct support. And there were four question, five comments against during that whole thing. So fifty-seven, four, five comments against. Um, and again, our, our reach on that post went well above thirty thousand people. It, it exploded, and I just wanna say this, that this impacts not just White Sulphur. This goes all the way to Great Falls, all the way to Billings, all the way to Helena.
So, can I ask you a question? So, on the, uh, I'm not sure what I'm asking this, but the, the people that answered the post or, I don't know what you call it.
Yep.
How many of the ones for and how many of the ones against were from Mark County?
Um, there was, it was a, we don't have that information, exactly.
We have to go through an individually tally and like look at each person's name.
But I can-
That's kinda who we represent.
I can say, I can say there are a couple here that did not. And I can say that overwhelming majority did. The ones from, from White Sulphur that were on our post.
But you don't have those.
I don't have that direct number because that means I would have to go-
We can look into that and get that to you if that's important.
We can get information for that. And not only that, um, there's two hundred and ninety-five shares, so there's a lot of information out there. Uh, we poked around a little bit and, and discovered that there were, uh, again, an overwhelming majority of people who were in support when I would go look at the shares themselves, so.
Charlie, can I just ask you a quick question on that? Because I understand, understand social media, and it has become a bigger thing, Chairman, and to kind of grasp that. It is a form of recreationalism. So, you know, we have enthusiasm from recreationalists. So it could be potentially biased in some regard. But you will know that with that contact and that thread and that conversation, we can, um, leverage public comment to the extent to our public officials. So we could take that three hundred shares and then try to get more people to share that. So ultimately, our goal would be to comment to you guys publicly, like the Federation did. Or they could, in sense, we could drive them to comment to our congressman. And then that would show that if, if there was another forum out there that was against something like an acquisition like that, they could do the same thing and get information from the congressman. But we in the Into the Little Belts will take that and we will push for public comment in support of the parties involved. So it is an interesting thing, but I wanted to really point out that it is a recreational forum, so.
So it is, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
And then-
And what I wanted to add to that was just simply that we are, we are in support of this land acquisition. Mainly because we believe that tourism is gonna, if it's not huge right now, it is one of our greatest growing economy potentials. And so if we can get more people coming in, I, I always say this, come in, spend your money and get the hell out. That, I love that. And they do that. I live in Ny Hard, you should see, you should see the turnaround we have. We'll have a, we'll have an event in Ny Hard where there's three hundred people that come in from other places. By the next day, it's quiet, you can hear a pin drop. And, and I love that, they come spend the money, they boost our economy, and they skedaddle, they go back home and they have a great memory, and they'll come back two, three times a year. And over the last six, seven years, we've certainly seen, uh, returning people that we've influenced that have come out and, and taken part in the recreation in this area now.
Um, just additionally, the thing that we've been doing over here in the corner, this is a live stream that's hooked up to our, um, Facebook page. So if you'd like to go back and review this, it will be on there for anybody to take a look at. We've consistently had about forty to fifty additional people tuning in with this meeting throughout the meeting, just so you're aware that there's about fifty-plus people out there who have joined us today from afar and have been commenting along and keeping up with the conversation. So, hello to our online viewers today.
So, yeah, if you're watching out there, thank you. But, um, and, and like I said, we're in support of it simply because we believe in outdoor recreation and tourism. And we think that's a very strong, strong thing that this whole community, White Sulphur, all the way to Ny Hard, all of the Little Belts honestly, um, can benefit from. So thank you for giving us time. Uh, we have to get going. Like I said, we have five children and we have, I don't know how many of our games at different places.
We've got three basketball games tonight, so.
So we gotta drive all the way to Falls now. Uh, so, we're gonna end this now, I guess, is the appropriate time.
Is there anything else that should be streamed that needs to be said real quick before this is over?
I apologize, Jim.
They don't have to stream me.
I apologize for not getting to see you on the list, go ahead.
What I have to say is, it's, it's basically an argument of whether the land should go public or not, right? I have three children, that I hunt, my family hunts, and I would love to let them hunt. So if someone private bu- buys a property, not saying it a ranch or anything like that, and somebody from outstate, which is happening all over Mark County, buys it and they lock it up or sell it up, there goes, we have nothing more to say about it. Why not keep our opinion? Why not keep, you know, our voice on what happens to it? That's it.
Thank you. So, does anybody else that wasn't on the list, they got a hand up back there?
I just wanted to speak to, um, Mr. Hogan's request for case study. I think if you go back in history and you look at the history of Jackson Hole, Wyoming, and Teton County, um, it, it kind of paints a picture of what could potentially have happened here. Um, it wasn't owned by the government when they started, it became federal land. Ninety-seven percent of Teton County is owned by the federal government. And as those acquisitions increased and the private ownership decreased, property values went up. All the business owners that were there loved it when it first started because they were seeing everyone coming in skiing, hunting, making money and all of this. But all of a sudden, those local people couldn't afford to live there anymore. And there's very few local people that were born and raised in Jackson Hole that live there today. And if we kept letting the federal government acquire land, that could happen in Mark County.
Anybody else?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Um, I'm Jeanie Holger of the Forest Service, and I'm here for information only. And there's a couple of questions I think is important to clarify. You had a specific question about grazing and-
Stream it, please.
Because we never asked you to.
Well, we can't hear the back.